Deputy Mayor Jared Nguyen-House will be running the meeting this evening for Monday, June 5th, so welcome. And with that, can you please call the rural city clerk?
Mayor Robinson.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Nguyen-House?
Here.
Councilmember Barkstale?
Here.
Councilmember Lee?
Yeah.
Councilmember Robertson?
Here.
Councilmember Stokes?
Here.
And Councilmembers on.
Terrific. Will you please join me in our pledge of allegiance? All right, so this evening, we do have one proclamation, and I have Councilmember Lee reading the LGBTQIA+ Pride Month proclamation. Councilmember Lee?
Thank you. Whereas lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, or questioning and non-binary communities of Bellevue are integral part of the vibrancy of our city and continue to have an immeasurable impact on the academic, economic, artistic, cultural, civic, and social spheres within and around our community. And whereas the month of June was designated Pride Month to commemorate the Stonewall riots which occurred in June 1969, and are generally recognized as the catalyst of the LGBTQIA+ rights movement. And whereas celebrating Pride Month provides visibility, support, and advocacy for the LGBTQIA+ community, and is an opportunity to recognize that further progress and action are needed to build acceptance and advance equality and equity for all. And whereas LGBTQIA+ rights are human rights, and the City of Bellevue believes in upholding the dignity of the individual, supporting legal equality for all people, and ensuring acts of discrimination and hatred are not tolerated. And whereas today's city and community leaders who are involved in the LGBTQIA+ and civil rights movements have played a critical role in continuing efforts toward a more just world. And whereas people from Black, Indigenous, and people of color communities who also identify as LGBTQIA+ are disproportionately impacted by high rates of violence, homelessness, mental health struggles, and isolation, with one in three transgender adults experiencing homelessness in their lifetime. And whereas in solidarity with LGBTQIA+ community, the City of Bellevue will fly pride flags at many city-owned facilities during the month of June, host and partner on pride events in the community, and work with community partners to place pride banners in downtown corridors. Now therefore, Lynn Robinson, Mayor of the City of Bellevue, Washington, and on behalf its city council, thus hereby proclaim the month of June 2023 as LGBTQIA+ Pride Month in Bellevue. And reaffirm our commitment to standing in solidarity with LGBTQIA+ residents against ongoing discrimination and injustice as we celebrate the meaningful, long-lasting impact of this community on Bellevue's rich and diverse history and culture. Signed, Lynn Robinson, Mayor, City of Bellevue.
Thank you, Councilmember Lee. Now, I believe we have some members of the RAD, the Rainbow Alliance for Diversity Employee Resource Group here at the city tonight, to accept the proclamation. Is there someone here? Oh, wonderful. Would you like to say a few words? Oh, wonderful. And then after that, we'll take a quick picture. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of council, and good evening. My name is Yuri Hattersley. I use they/them/their's pronouns and oversee a continuous improvement program within the city's finance and asset management department, as well as serve as one of two co-chairs of the city's Rainbow Alliance for Diversity. I'm honored to represent RAD tonight to receive our Pride Month proclamation. There's so much power in hearing elected officials stand up and affirm the rights of LGBTQ+ people, particularly in times like we experienced today, where LGBTQ+ rights are challenged in many parts of the country and around the world. What's beautiful about Bellevue is our council vision statement of Bellevue welcomes the world, our diversity is our strength, we embrace the future while we recognize the past, stands in firm support of our ability to show up and support all communities and throughout June and beyond the LGBTQ+ community. Our efforts for pride in Bellevue have blossomed over the last few days, last week or so actually, with the Pride kickoff event on June 1st here in council chambers that was very well attended, as well as the Paws and Pride Dog Jog and Walk yesterday at Ashwood Park. Both events were very well received, and we are grateful for your continued support as leaders to create spaces where we can hold these events, build community both internally and externally, and advance towards a more equitable future for all LGBTQIA+ people within Bellevue. In addition to the external work that we've done, our internal efforts as staff have really blossomed in trying to build a more inclusive workplace for employees, focusing on things like new training for staff around microaggressions and recognizing privilege, guidance on how to use inclusive pronouns in the way we communicate with each other and with members of the community, recognizing Transgender Remembrance Week at the end of November, where we honor lives lost to anti-trans violence, and creating spaces for us to be vulnerable together, share stories, build community, and advance the values that this council holds in ensuring that we are delivering the quality public service that many of us come to work every day to do. Pride offers us an important opportunity to recommit to ensuring that the health, safety, and sense of belonging of all LGBTQIA+ people in Bellevue, which is something that again is more important now than ever. And on behalf of the Rainbow Alliance for Diversity, want to thank you again and wish everybody a happy Pride Month. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so on to our next item here. Do I have a motion to approve our agenda for this evening? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? That passes, thank you. Next, we have oral communications. City clerk, are there any speakers signed up to provide oral communications this evening?
Yes, thank you, Deputy Mayor. There are six pre-registered speakers this evening, and before I start calling names, I need to remind the public that oral communications is for a period of no more than 30 minutes total. Three speakers will be allowed to speak to any one particular side of a topic, and you will be given three minutes to make your comments. In addition, I need to remind everyone that in accordance with Washington State Public Disclosure Laws regarding the use of public facilities, no election-related topics can be discussed during oral communications or other public participation points on the agenda. This includes promoting or opposing ballot measures, or promoting or supporting a candidate for election, which includes discussing your own campaign platform. Any speaker who begins discussing topics of this nature will be asked to stop. And with that, I will call our first speaker, who's David Loudenback, who is joining us in person. Mr. Loudenback has asked Ms. Luce to join him at the table in case he needs any support.
Good evening, Mayor Robinson, Dr. Barkstale, and other council members. My name is David Loudenback. It's been two months since I've spoken at a council meeting. In that time, I've walked another 120 miles. I've met a lot of interesting people. Last week, I met a blind woman near Pioneer Square. She was saying, "Help me, help me." No one was helping her. I said, "How can I help? My name is David." I did not yell. She was blind, not deaf. I asked if I could pick up her cane. Always ask to touch their belongings. Ask. She was not taking, she was taking the same bus as me. I got us on the 554, not the 594. Things happened for a reason, I kept on saying out loud. We did get on the right bus eventually. I speak for disabled and blind people. Today, I come, I come to speak for those that cannot speak, those that have dogs, mayor, those that take them to the meadow at Airfield Park, chasing balls happily, returning them to whoever threw them and dropping them, maybe, those walking their cats on leashes. Yes, I've seen that. The kids chasing butterflies or dragonflies, I refer them as dragon fairy, as in a mythical creature having close relationships to humans. Perhaps one of you will think of them like that too from now on. The deer that use the Airfield Park as a wildlife corridor, the squirrels, the birds and the bees. Are they still teaching that in school these days? Sex education? Paved Paradise? Put up a parking lot for 400 cars? Those little blue signs on the drains that display drains to such, in such creek, or in this case Phantom Lake, less than three blocks away? And let's not forget, the greatest reason of all, the bald eagle, a protected species. It floats in the thermals over air, overhead, and swoops down over the meadow at Airfield Park.
Thank you.
Our next speaker on the list is Susan Papalardo.
Good evening. My name is Susan Papalardo, and I work and play at Bellevue, and I'm the co-founder and president of Splash Forward. As we head into summer with many ways to recreate around our beautiful waters, we are reminded that knowing how to swim and be safe around water is a critical life skill to safely enjoy them. Bellevue Airfield Park is a 27 and a half acre designated parkland purchased by the City of Bellevue in 2002. It was originally master planned with community input in 2012 to be developed to serve the community's recreational needs. The 2023 preferred master plan update balances active and passive with the forest portions largely protected. 16 acres are wooded with limited development, and 11 and a half acres are open and developable. In 1990, the Washington State Growth Management Act was created to address the challenges posed by rapid population growth and urban sprawl in the state. The state has preserved natural lands outside city boundaries, so the land within city boundaries can be used efficiently. Today, you can hop on a King County-sponsored Trailhead Direct Bus from East Gate Park and ride, and in 20 to 30 minutes, you can be in our beautiful wilderness. With the 2022 master plan update, Bellevue is fulfilling their obligation to implement their comprehensive plan and tackle a known problem of increasing demand for aquatic facilities. The concerns raised about community access to the new Bellevue Aquatic Center can be addressed. Community activities like family recreation, group exercise, aquatic fitness, events, and social community gatherings will happen at the aquatic center. Amenities like gathering spaces, restrooms, water fun, and group activities will support the many activities in the park. The new Bellevue Aquatic Center will be very different from King County Aquatic Center. King County was built and designed to host the 1990 Goodwill Games. The premise was to support international and national level competition, and it is the second largest succeeding capacity of any indoor aquatic center. With a lot of time we spent with the King County Facility Management and community stakeholders to design the new Bellevue Aquatic Center as a complementary facility, it'll create equitable access to community programming like all-age recreation, family fun, swim lessons, lap swimming, adult aquatic fitness, special needs and adaptive swim, and therapeutic programs. It also serves the high school, youth, adult, and regional aquatic sports. It'll be the home base for Special Olympics of Washington with regional and state meets, and a training facility for our fire department. With five bodies of water and nearly 50% dedicated to community and recreation space at the new Bellevue Aquatic Center, there's more shallow warm water areas. We have developed an environmental sustainability vision that speaks to the opportunities for sustainable design and high-performance environmental design.
Thank you. The next speaker on our list is Kate Sinan.
Hi, I'm Kate Sinan, and I'm here representing over 1,100 community members who oppose development at the meadow at Airfield Park. It's important to note that over 800 of these signatures have only been gotten within the last month, and the numbers are growing every day as people are finally informed. We are all here to deliver this first batch of signatures, and it won't be our last time. Contrary to what the council describes as very robust outreach to the community, our experience demonstrates that this wasn't accurate. Council members, you've indicated that you were satisfied with the June 2022 turnout of 35 people for the onsite meeting to assess the support of key stakeholders, our community members, when in fact, you failed to provide reasonable notice to the public per the revised code of Washington, RCW 3670B 1104A and B. A site-specific proposal was not posted to the property, and notice was not adequately published with the specified information in quote, "the newspaper of general circulation in the general area where the proposal is located," or in a local land use newsletter published by the local government, end quote. Other than one short reference in February of 2022, months before the onsite walk, there has been no mention of the project in the Bellevue It's Your City paper. This is where most citizens would assume they would find important information. Follow-on meetings were well-attended, but it was by two special interest groups, which furthered the illusion of broad-based support. It's time to recognize that this project was pushed through without the necessary broad-based community, excuse me, support it required. There is so much more that needs to be said here that obviously can't be spoken in three minutes. So instead, we are here with expectations for genuine engagement by the council. Those expectations include, but are not limited to, resuming open-ended discussions with the community to include additional onsite meetings that follow reasonable RCW notification standards, providing full updates and reviews in Bellevue It's Your City paper, revisiting requirements for active use and providing data as to how that was established beyond a very biased survey and vague language within multi-project park levies, reopening negotiations with Bellevue College, and looking into other alternative urbanized sites, clarifying risks for using pin pile foundation on a landfill-based structure, including the risks of possible settling in the construction of the pile, which could lead to cracking and how that would affect the integrity of swimming pools inside those structures, engaging with the environmental concerns involved with the wildlife corridor destruction and methane released into the environment, and finally-
Miss Sinan, your time has expired.
-explaining how a recreational facility is compatible with-
Thank you.
Anyway, thank you.
As much as possible, we'd like to try and do this, please. Thank you.
Next speaker is Alex Zimmerman.
Zihail, dirty dem Nazi fascist mafioso. My name is Alex Zimmerman, and I live in Bellevue more than 35 years. My goal before November right now, very simple. We need stopping dirty government, plus dem Nazi council, plus Amazon a bandita, for stop make Bellevue absolutely absurd. When Amazon, with your support and government support, will bring 30,000 people from jungle, life will be miserable, like I talk about this in 96 when Microsoft come. You listen to me? No. We have right now nightmare for everything. So, what is your goal? This is union, you know what it means? Mafioso union, government council in Amazon. More money, more money, 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 more money. For who? For management? Amazonian management? For real estate owner? For who? You understand when another 30,000 people will become from jungle, you know what it means? Like before we have right now, situation will be absolutely critical. Price for everything go up. Is this number one? And number two, you're talking about minority, minority, black, white, pardon, black, another color, another color. How about white people? White people in Bellevue right now, minority. I know this because I live for 35 years. And 35 years ago, Bellevue hundred percent, almost hundred percent, is a white. Right now, white people is minority. It's a pure Holocaust and genocide. So I speak right now to everybody to listen to me. Guys, no, I not speak only to white. I speak to everybody who listen to me, 250,000 people. Guys, what's going on? What is goal? You know what it means? Push people like I'm to Amazon or another corporation, most of them is color people, and take white people out. In this situation, 100,000 people will be moved from Bellevue. So this situation, what is we have right now? Is this exactly what is we need stopping? For this, we need change and cleanse this table. Is stopping talking only about money? More money, more money. For who? For who more, more money? Can you explain to me? For management? For Amazon? For you? Because real estate, everything go up? If we will pay for traffic too? If our price for food? For everything? So right now, I speak to everybody. Stand up, America. Make Bellevue greet again, now, because I'm tired and sick from you for many years.
Thank you. Our next speaker on the list is Patrick Seth Yanethen. Mr. Seth Yanethen, can you hear me? We can. Your time begins now.
I have a stop clock in front of me now, so I'm having to time myself, but thank you. Good evening to everybody. And for once, I get to go after Mr. Zimmerman. No disrespect, but the general effect of Mr. Zimmerman's speeches seem to be to wipe out everybody's memories of what came before. So now I'm glad I get to go after him. My concern is with the Bellevue Police Department. Again, I have been a resident of Bellevue since 2006, but I've had issues with the Bellevue Police since 2018. And, okay, my biggest safety concern, in short, are the Bellevue Police. These days, I am literally scared to go out because I might be arrested, or something might happen, which might not normally happen to some other person. And to describe why that may be, there is one detective, Wilfred Halifax, who in 2019 obtained a search warrant for my home because the box of a pellet, break-barrel pellet gun, was visible through my window. And he convinced a judge that that could be a weapon, and he got the search warrant, and meanwhile, I was safely confined, and so my home keys were in police custody. And Detective Halifax comes along, and he wants to open the door. He does not have the keys. So a normal person might think, hmm, we have his keys. They are in my heart custody. But, or you might even think, how about calling a locksmith and drilling a hole in the lock and opening the door? Nope. Detective Halifax yanks the entire door out from its hinges, and he and God knows how many people tramp through my home, shorting out a car battery, melting the cables that were connected to it, almost setting fire to my home. I discovered this later, but, oh, I go into too much detail. I, okay, in short, I have been trying to complain to the Office of Accountability, but since Bellevue does not have one, Bellevue Police don't have an Office of Accountability, I have, my complaints have been responded to by Mr. Office of Accountability, Captain John Alter responding with something like, "I put on my OFC, Office of Accountability hat, investigated myself when I was wearing my policeman hat, and I did nothing wrong." And until I find an alternative way to get my concerns addressed, this is my only forum. I think I should stop there. I could go on into much more detail, but I should stop. Thank you for lending a ear. Patrick Seth Yanethen.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Stacy Bacon.
I lived in Bellevue for, oh my gosh, 23 years, a long time, from Victoria to Lake Hills area. I go to Airfield Park frequently. And even though, oh, is it not on? Do I need to go closer? Oh, okay. Lean in. Hope that doesn't take up too much of my time. Let me get to the point. Um, let's see here. So, the meadow. There's four reasons that I think that the meadow should go undeveloped, and I'm going to share them with you. One, meadows serve as a natural reservoir for water. Meadows act like a sponge. They hold on to the heavy rains or snow melt from the surrounding forests, and then release that water slowly into creeks, streams, or drains throughout the summer and fall. Two, meadows capture and store carbon from the atmosphere. For every meadow that is lost or degraded, humans and wildlife are losing a natural air purifier. I think that we could all pause to take a moment to reflect on the summer wildfires and what that did to our air quality, and I think we all suffered from that, not just us but other species. And we need to keep that in mind as we continue to develop. Number three, meadows help maintain diversity in our ecosystem. Meadows provide habitat for hundreds of terrestrial and aquatic species, frogs, fish, butterflies, bees, birds, deer, rabbits, and foxes can often be found in meadows and serve as a source of food for larger animals. And I think we've all heard the frogs, or seen the butterflies, or watched the birds. I could talk a lot more about that, but I'm not going to because I don't have time. Number four, meadows provide great recreation opportunities. Recreation opportunities, right? That's what we want, want a place to go and recreate, right? And it says, "People get to observe and be one with nature in a quiet place. This practice of, this practice of bathing in nature has been proven to lower blood pressure, heart rate, and levels of harmful hormones like cortisol, which your body produces when it's stressed. This can help you, this can help put you in a more calm and relaxed state. In conclusion, allowing for destruction of this meadow puts the overall health and wellness of the community in danger, and I'm requesting any current or future plans to develop this area be denied. And others will continue to fight for the protection and health of this land, and would actually like to see restoration happening to the land." So that's what's going on. And also, our trees are dying, and I want you to start paying attention to the trees that are tagged with metal tags. It's a serious problem. That's all.
Thank you. That is the end of our pre-registered list of speakers this evening. I will say that we have reached three- I will say that we have reached three speakers in support of Save Our Meadow. If there are any additional topics that anyone would like to speak about, we do have a few minutes left of oral communications. Raise of hand in council chambers or online, please. Yeah, I'll take that back here. Deputy Mayor, I do not see any additional hands.
Okay, thank you so much, Clerk. All right, now we'll be moving on to the report of the city manager. I think we have four different reports, but we're going to have presentations on two items and then two are written information only, no presentation. I'll just remind my colleagues that we won't be engaging in any questions or comments, but if we have any follow-up after the presentation, please follow up with the respective individual. Thank you. With that, city manager, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor and Mayor and council members. The first item is, the presentation is a piece of good news and that is an award the Botanical Garden recently received here tonight to talk about that award and provide additional information about the Bellevue Botanical Garden and upcoming activities, says James Gagliardi, who is the Bellevue Botanical Garden Director with Parks and Community Services Department. I'd also like to acknowledge, I believe, members of the Botanical Garden Society leadership are joining us this evening, both virtually and in the audience. And with that, I'll turn it over to you, James.
Thank you so much, City Manager, as well as the Mayor Robinson and Deputy Mayor Nguyen House. Very appreciative to have this moment to talk about probably the easiest topic of why we are the best for the Botanic Garden. So my first time in front of council, it's a great topic for me and I appreciate that. So we recently were awarded Best Public Garden by a King Five Viewer Poll and hoping to start here with a little video that shows that award. Do we just want to move past it? Okay. I challenged them with something new. I didn't know I wasn't supposed to invent a video.
The fragrances and feel a little more calm. That's flower power. The reason Bellevue Botanical Garden has been a peaceful destination for more than three decades.
Hear the birds sing, to hear the stream run, but to stop and actually smell the flowers. That old saying is something that you should be doing. We are right in the heart of Bellevue here, but it feels like a different world.
It's no wonder four hundred twenty-five thousand people visited in two thousand twenty-two alone. The fifty-three acre garden is run by the city and supported by nonprofits and volunteers.
Our mission is to be the best example of gardening for homeowners in the Pacific Northwest. We have over three thousand different varieties of plants here. Things that you can then incorporate into your own yard.
QR codes around the grounds provide all the info you need. No matter the season, there's always something to see. Spring and summer are full of color.
And we're especially popular in winter. We have our Garden Delights, which is a garden light show that runs from about Thanksgiving to New Year's Day.
The best part, Bellevue Botanical Garden is completely free.
The price is right. This garden is here for everyone and we want everyone to feel welcomed. Do you think you can click past that slide? As we work on that, just appreciate the technological feat to get that video shown because I think it just shows us in such a lovely light. And as we were forming that video, you can see the attendance that was there. The people that were there in the crowd was just wonderful. So that vibrancy of life and that vibrancy of the community is really what we're bringing together in the garden. And this award is especially meaningful when you look at that it's chosen in the King Five Poll. It's chosen by the people. Are we going to get the rest of the presentation back? Definitely broke the city council in my first time.
We might just want to. Yeah.
Continue on.
Thank you.
So the Bellevue Botanical Garden, our mission is to be here for the community. That's reflected in this clip. And we're really doing a garden to connect people to plants. And our mission based on being a garden for the home gardener. With that, we have over ten different partners within the city and the society that are supporting our garden. The Bellevue Botanic Garden Society has been a partner with us from day one and are purely focused on the support of the garden. And then we have nine other partners that also work with us, supporting our activity within the garden, including Bellevue Utilities, which has been with us for decades, doing our Waterwise Garden. The garden is successful. It's a wonderful gem within this city. And last year we had a record four hundred twenty-five thousand visitors. And we're above that number now as we're running into two thousand twenty-three. It is quite impressive. When I arrived here just over, just under a year ago, everybody said the garden is the best kept secret. It feels wonderful. It feels like it's part of our community. But what people don't recognize is how many people do actually see the garden, its presence there and enjoy it. We are now improving to give better visitor services. So we just started a new greeter program, new interpretive signs, things that are welcoming as we get closer and closer to this audience of half a million people. And it truly is a garden that's supported by the community. In the past year, we had nearly seven hundred fifty volunteers contribute over sixteen thousand hours. And right now our numbers are eighteen percent above that. We already have a thousand more volunteer hours than we had last year at this time. We are connecting people to plants. We are fifty-three acres, twelve thematic gardens that are free to the public, open dawn till dusk. There is hardly any barriers for the public to attend the garden and we are continuing to remove anything that we do see. There are over three thousand varieties of plants in our collection because we're about the flowers and that's what we want to do. We're excited to bring a full-time curator on board with a recent endowment that was given to the garden. And we're also excited about our educational efforts. This spring in our Living Lab Program that's run by the Bellevue Botanic Garden Society, we've had over two thousand students enrolled. This is a program that's given free to the community, that is supported through the Bellevue Botanic Garden Society. And they're continuing to also remove barriers, giving their first bus scholarship to students attending that field trip program this year. We are excited to have a local and a national impact and continue to work with the city, the society and our partners to have a wonderful garden for people to enjoy. Thank you.
Thanks, James. And thank you for all of your work and all the work of past and present employees, volunteers, et cetera, of which there are many, many, many. It's a treasure and I'm not sure how much longer it's going to be hidden, but especially now and with this amount of PR around it, more people will be able to discover it. And like you said, the price is right as well. So thank you so much for the presentation.
Thank you, thank you.
Mayor and Deputy Mayor, our next, I had one of the managers' report is an informational update on the city's Diversity Advantage Initiative. Tonight, staff will review some highlights of the Diversity Advantage Team's current work. Joining us this evening is Dr. Linda Whitehead, Chief of Diversity Equity and Inclusion. And with that, I'll turn it over to you, Linda, to begin the presentation.
Yeah, with that introduction.
That was a lovely introduction. Thank you very much. And will we have my slides?
So every time we share a PowerPoint, you can hear the video from the clip. So we are getting IT in the room to fix that.
Clerk, will that take long? We could take a quick break at this moment if we think that.
I think hopefully about thirty seconds.
Thirty seconds?
Just pause.
We'll hold. Thank you.
Well, the videos weren't that bad. Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members, city manager and all others in attendance. Thank you for the opportunity to provide a brief overview of the Diversity Advantage Team's work. I promise to keep it short. If you have follow-up questions, please feel free to reach out or if you'd like, simply invite me back. The focal point of the work includes the following. Diversity Advantage, Diversity Advantage Plan two thousand fourteen, the budgeting for equity tools, DEI training and development, centering communities of color, cross-cultural project and annual cultural events. The Diversity Advantage Plan two thousand fourteen is when it was developed. As you know, next year is two thousand twenty-four, so the Diversity Advantage Plan is turning ten years old. We are busy updating the Diversity Advantage Plan. The, as the plan celebrates its tenth year, we would also like to recognize those who developed the plan, the very first plan. And we lovingly call the DAP one point O. So I would like to acknowledge all of the work that was put into the very first plan. It has given us a great set as far as updating the plan. And updating the plan, we will use more data-driven information to help support the foundation of the document and its daily work. In revising the plan or updating the plan, we are using the framework of start, can start, stop and continue for developing feedback. We've already started working with our staff, getting feedback from them. This fall, we will be going out to the community. When we go out to the community, we're going to ask three simple questions. What should we keep doing? What should we stop doing? And what should we start doing? I'm happy to share that the communities of color, as well as BDan, which are two external groups, will be going out into the community to assist us in gathering this information. Thank you. The Budget Equity Tool, we're very excited about this tool. We're excited about the tool for many reasons, but what I would like to share today is that the Budget Equity Tool will assure we are implementing equity into departmental policies and practice. The tool is going to make certain we advance equitable outcomes for all residents. The tool strategy that we're going to use is to adopt the equity lens, assessment, accountability. So we're looking at data-driven assessment and accountability. The assessment, we're going to check to make certain we're doing what we say. And that results will then hold us accountable to our residents. Our DEI training and development, the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Training, we have been extremely busy in that area, developing curriculum for all staff training. It was a joint effort by HR Department and the interrupting microaggression and privilege training has kicked off. I believe it started about two weeks ago and the goal is to train all of our staff. And once again, the DEI Department will be working with HR to complete that goal. Communities of color, centering communities of color. This is the external group that I mentioned earlier. We are very excited about what will be taking place within the next couple of months in the communities of color. This summer, the communities of color will be hosting several dialogues through the month of July and August. What are we going to do with all of this information, you might ask? We will use that input from the dialogues to co-create recommendations and actions with racial equity outcomes to present to you by the end of the year. I want to also highlight that the members of the communities of color have been going through a series of training. And the training is for them to go out. We will, as staff members, be with them, but the dialogues will be facilitated by the members of the communities of color. The training that our team has received was conducted by Joshua Barr, who is an outside consultant. Cross-cultural project, this is one of my favorites. Well, actually, they're all of my favorite. The last time I was in front of you, you all gave me three very distinct directions that you would like for me to move into. Move forward with cross-cultural programming, began looking for a nonprofit partner to lead development of cross-cultural work and C, investigate space availability in the city of Bellevue. It definitely was a tall order that you gave us, but we have been up for the challenge. I would like to direct your attention to number three. The work that you will hear as far as awards, the funds were allotted to us and I would like to thank you and the city manager for giving us the DEI budget an increase for the year of two thousand twenty-three and two thousand twenty-four. What we will be doing is we will launch a creation of traveling centers this summer. We will host a short community design process to refine the hundreds of ideas found in the previous studies. We will identify potential partners to move forward into action. And this fall slash winter, the city will award funds to nonprofits to support program development for the traveling centers. So I'm very excited about that. Great deal of action. And finally, I would like to highlight our current work under annual events. The cultural events have been absolutely amazing this year. I'm very excited to be a part of. The cultural events are learning opportunities for us all, as well as a great deal of fun. I will save our pride. First, I'll start with AANHPI Heritage Month. We just completed the celebration of Asian American Native Hawaiian Pacific Islander Month. That was a very good month as far as coming, walking through the concourse to learn. We had the Chinese Railroad exhibit. We had beautiful art decoration throughout the concourse. And finally, one night only, we had a group of Japanese Americans to walk us through Never Again. Never Again, while it was a sad point in our history, it is very much a part of our history. And it was from here in the Pacific Northwest where Japanese Americans were taken from their home, sent to a staging center in Puyallup and then on to the internment camps. I just, for those of you who missed it, I hope if we do it again next year, you will tune in because it was absolutely amazing. Last week, we celebrated Pride. Last week, we celebrated Pride, and boy, did we not celebrate Pride. It was extremely colorful. I thank you all for attending. It was festive, but it was also learning. Dr. Joel O'Brien from Seattle University, it was an excellent lecture. But it wasn't the kind that bored you. It was the kind where you wanted to lean into what she was teaching us. So that was amazing. We had, for the very first time, I believe, in this chambers, a drag queen. And she was excellent. Very elegant, very gracious. So it was absolutely a wonderful event. Yuri Hattersley and Sarah Boyle, a special thank you, as well as to Rad. Finally, I invite you all to our Juneteenth Celebration. Juneteenth Celebration will be housed here in Chamber on June 20. We will have a panelist. The panelists will consist of influencers. So, okay, companies, Sound Transit, Symmetra, Bellevue College, Amazon, just to list a few, will be a part of our panelists. We have a wonderful guest facilitator, one of our own. Councilmember Jeremy Barksdale will be facilitating the questions, the panelists. Once that is completed, we will have music, dance, and spoken word, and of course, a reception. Juneteenth is very dear to me. It's a celebration of freedom. And we need to have fun, but we also need to learn so that it will never happen again. I would like to, in advance, thank you, Amazon, who is co-sponsoring the event. So with that, thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Dr. Whitehead. Again, if you can, please, thank you. Instead of clapping. All right, City Manager, I think we are ready to move on to consent calendar. Unless you wanted to mention those two other...
Just maybe briefly, Deputy Mayor, there is a not for presentation tonight, a written report on our environmental stewardship initiative. It's a quarterly report. And then the second item is just a report on emergency proclamation that was made because of an emergency that occurred up in the south end of the city. Just reporting on that.
Thank you, City Manager. All right, so now we're moving on to the consent calendar. However, before we have a motion and vote on the consent calendar, I'm going to turn it over to the Mayor to make a quick statement. Mayor Robinson, floor is yours.
Thank you. I'm going to ask to be recused from this for my husband's, he's retired now, but past involvement in the King County Housing Authority, and me being on the board of Hope Lake. So I shall turn off my microphone and my camera, and I'll be back when you're done.
All right, thank you, Mayor. All right, now that the mayor... I was going to say, now that the mayor has recused herself and left the meeting, do I have a motion? Okay, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? And that passes. Mayor, you are welcome to rejoin us. Wonderful, thank you. All right, now we're going to move on to one of our first study sessions. Discussion of ordinance regarding local construction codes. I'll turn it over to City Manager to introduce the topic tonight.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, Mayor, and council members. This first study session will focus on proposed updates to the city's building and fire codes. And just by way of background, state law requires adoption of new construction and fire codes on a periodic basis. The presentation tonight will review the specific changes that staff are proposing. And after the presentation, staff are seeking council direction to return with some ordinances for adoption at a future date. So joining us this evening at the table is Greg Schrader, who is our building official. To his right is Travis Ripley with the Fire Department. But that'll turn it over to you, Greg.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager, and good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and Council. We are seeking direction, as the City Manager noted, from Council this evening regarding the construction and fire code updates. We'll keep our presentation relatively brief. I think in the time that I've worked with the city, this may be, with a couple of notable exceptions that I'll talk about later, one of the more straightforward code updates that we've done. We'll describe the process by which the codes are developed and adopted, the statewide implementation date, and we'll note the more significant changes for you. Here is the list of national model codes that are applicable throughout the state. These are what we typically bring forward each three years for the periodic update. This chart illustrates the code development path. It starts with a national consensus process, and that involves a very broad spectrum of stakeholders throughout the industry. That leads to the Washington State evaluation of the codes, which is done by technical advisory groups. Those are subject matter experts in each technical area, and they essentially work under the umbrella of the State Building Code Council. Once the state adoption process is concluded, all cities and counties are mandated to enforce the state-adopted codes. So the technical content is primarily determined at the national and state level. Our local discretion is limited by state law. We can modify the codes so long as the changes don't lessen the provisions of the state code. And regarding the city of Bellevue adoption process, I do want to note that three public stakeholder outreach meetings were conducted last fall, from September through November. Those were attended by well over 100 representatives of the construction, design, and development industry, which is quite a sizable turnout. I want to focus just for a moment on the state process. The authority for implementing statewide codes, as you may know, resides with the State Building Code Council. That's a body of representatives nominated by the governor, which includes elected officials and industry representatives. Some of you may recall that former Bellevue Mayor John Chalmak was a member of the Building Code Council at one time. Earlier this spring, that body voted to delay implementation of codes from July 1st to October 29th, which the building officials did support. That allows the industry and building departments more time to complete training and to update applicable public information. If so directed by Council, our intention is to bring these two ordinances back for possible adoption in the early fall as we get closer to the October 29th implementation date. I'll talk about the more significant changes at the national level. The option to design and construct up to an 18-story building out of mass timber, which is, would be, a high-rise building, was introduced into the national codes three years ago with the last set of technical codes. Those provisions are continuing to be refined as more experience is gained and more technical research is completed. At the state level, there's been a lot of attention focused on the energy code. The energy efficiency requirements are increasing as we move toward the goal to, by 2030, to increase energy efficiency by 70% relative to that that was stipulated by the 2006 energy code. So we are continuing down that path. It does now require heat pumps for both space and water heating in houses, and pre-wiring for vehicle charging. And there has been some controversy about some of those requirements. The shift with the energy code is really more towards mechanical and electrical systems now. Our focus for the Bellevue codes. Well, first I'll note that the administrative code has some updates to make it more consistent with the administration of the existing building code. But Fire Marshal Ripley has worked very closely with Fire Department personnel to reduce the number of local amendments, which historically are really driven by firefighting operations. So I appreciate those efforts, and I think that increases our consistency with neighboring cities and counties, which is an advantage, and that's really been part of our DS process improvement work. So with that, just a quick reminder that there are two separate ordinances being considered this evening for the construction and fire codes. They go hand in hand since the national codes are published by the same agency and are each adopted by the state. And of course, we're happy to answer any questions, so I'll hand it back to you, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you so much, Greg and Travis. Thank you for joining us this evening. Thanks for the great presentation. Do we have any comments or questions on this at all from my fellow council members? Shall I see Councilmember Robertson, please?
So I know that the State Building Code Council has put 120-day delay on this because of the Ninth Circuit decision regarding natural gas. And I understand there's also a pending Washington State lawsuit on the same topic regarding natural gas. Do you know, and I'm not asking you to look in the crystal ball, but if you heard anything, about what changes that the State Building Code Council is considering bringing forward as a result of that litigation, or whether they're waiting to see... I mean, are they doing a wait-and-see, or are they figuring out changes to implement? I just didn't know where they are.
There really has not been much information shared with building officials about what's being considered. I'm sure they're in close consultation with their attorneys, but unfortunately, I don't have a lot of information on that. The 120 days, I think, does buy both the State Building Code Council, the industry, and the building departments some more time to see what develops with that.
And since we have to adopt by October 29th, I assume that they're going to be putting forward changes. They'll be doing it at least 30 days before that. I mean, do we know?
I have not heard that any changes will be proposed beyond what is already on record. But it's unknown at this point.
My impression was that they would be proposing changes as a result of litigation. Otherwise, why would they push pause?
Delay.
Yeah, exactly. So then I know that we've talked about, or maybe I've talked about, over the years, Bellevue's idea of Bellevue adopting the International Property Maintenance Code. And I can't remember what the former Director of DES, or DDS, had said about that. So that is not included in this ordinance, is it?
That's correct, Councilmember.
Is that coming forward? And if so, what will be the context and when?
Well, three years ago, we did actually move language into, we created Bellevue City Code, Chapter 2320, Dangerous Buildings, and 2322 for the Housing Code, which is different certainly from the Property Maintenance Code. It does cover some of the same material. We did not, as part of this code update, go through and analyze the Property Maintenance Code and determine what parts we might propose to adopt or to delete. There is certainly, and I know many jurisdictions have done that, as we've discussed in the past, and we could certainly take a look at that in the future.
Yeah, because I thought that, I thought we were going to be doing that at some point, that it was on a schedule. Do you remember, Brad? We got to call Mike Brennan from retirement and ask him what the plan was. Yeah, so I would just put in a plug for Bellevue, considering the International Property Maintenance Code. It is a really excellent tool for making sure that buildings and properties are safe, livable, maintained. And when code enforcement is required, it really is the most easily effective way to do it. So I would just encourage that. So that sums up my questions and comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Any comments here? Councilmember Robertson?
Yes, thank you. You know, thank you for bringing this to us early so that we can make sure we're teed up and ready to go. I had a question about the fire code, because I, okay, I was curious, so I was reading through it. And it had a section on the violations where it looked like there's more language in there now. So were we finding an issue with violators that were not taking care of the issue? Because it talked a bit about crediting costs back to the city, and I just wondered if that was an issue that we were running into that prompted the additions in the code.
There shouldn't really have been additions. Maybe some of the things we're cleaning up, you know, so what you may have seen, like strike-through red line, just aligned with maybe the new code and kind of aligning with sections. We did work on some of the violations pieces last go-round to, you know, we use that more as a tool to encourage, you know, people to...
Not to do it in the first place.
You know, we never want to use that as a primary tool.
Okay, well, thank you. I just wanted to understand that. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Robertson. Councilwoman Lee?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to follow up what the Councilmember Robertson was asking. Do we need to get that answer back, or are we ready to give direction to the staff?
The building code is mandated by the state, and the new one doesn't take effect until October 29th, so we can't pass this. Yeah. But yeah, it'd be good to get follow-up when we know. They're very secretive right now.
So we can actually now direct the staff to go ahead? If that's the case, are you ready? I would move.
Well, I'm not done yet, making sure we've had a chance to ask questions or make comments. But thank you, Councilwoman Lee. Councilmember Stokes? Okay, great, thank you. Mayor Robinson? Okay. Councilwoman Lee, if you'd like to make the motion, please go right ahead. Although, is a head nod enough, Greg, or do we need a motion on this?
I will defer to you.
Okay, then we'll do a motion because Councilwoman Lee's in the mood, so let's do it.
Easier that way. I move to direct staff to bring code update, or then inspect for adoption.
All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? And that passes. Thank you both so much for coming down tonight. Appreciate it. All right, City Manager, ready for our next study session item? And after this item, we'll take a short break before we finish up our last item before adjourning. So, City Manager, turn it over to you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor and Mayor, and council members. Next study session tonight is a presentation on the Proposed Donation Program for Utility Rate Assistance. Just by way of background, this is a council-directed initiative whereby the proposed program allows committee members to make donations in support of Bellevue utility rate relief programs. After tonight's presentation, staff are seeking council direction to return with an ordinance establishing the Neighbor Helping Neighborhoods Donation-Funded Utility Rate Assistance Program, which you'll hear about in just a moment. Joining us tonight is Lucy Liu, Deputy Director, and to her right is Andy Baker, Fiscal Manager, both from the Utilities Department. With that, I'll turn it over to you, Lucy.
Thank you, Mr. Miyake. Good evening, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor, and House and council members. We are excited to bring before you the Neighbor Helping Neighbors Donation Program for Utility Rate Assistance for your consideration tonight. A little while back, Council asked staff to look into implementing a program that would allow the community to make donations to help support Bellevue's utility rate relief efforts. At that time, we did not have the technology in place to support a donation program. Good news, we are in the process of implementing a new billing system that will have this functionality. So we are now ready to consider a donation program. So tonight, we are seeking your direction to bring back an ordinance to establish the Neighbor Helping Neighbors Donation-Funded Utility Rate Assistance Program. And with that, I am going to turn it over to Andy to review the proposed program details with you.
All right, thank you, Lucy. I've got a fairly compact agenda for you all tonight. I'll provide a brief background on what we've done to get here today, an overview of our existing customer assistance programs. I'll explain the proposed donation-funded program, discuss the next steps, and answer any questions that you may have. So as Lucy mentioned, this process started with a request from Council to consider accepting donations in support of rate relief. Staff then researched options, evaluated the technical feasibility, and did benchmarking around best practices for these sorts of programs. One significant factor that we identified is that our current billing system can't handle accepting donations on the bill. Fortunately, we are in the process of implementing a new system, and that new system will have all the capabilities that we need. So this is the right time to tackle this. Today, we're sharing our findings and the proposed program, and with your approval, we'll proceed with outreach and communications, policy and code changes, and move on to technical implementation for your direction. So as background, we currently have three different utility relief programs. The Emergency Assistance Program is for temporary or crisis assistance. This is our newest program, so I'll start with this one. It was implemented in 2019. It covers up to four months of basic utility service costs for low-income customers who are facing a temporary financial shock such as job loss. The Utility Rate Relief Program is our ongoing assistance program. It provides low-income seniors and permanently disabled residents a 70% discount on basic utility services. This is our primary assistance program, and it provides a significant amount of assistance. Not only is the 70% level better than what many utilities offer, we make this program available to both households in single-family homes... available to both households in single-family homes and tenants in multifamily apartments, while most utilities only offer their discount programs to single-family residents. We also offer utility tax relief to low-income households. We help about 1,000 households every year with all of these programs, and we provide over $1 million per year in assistance. So our current programs are good, but I'm here talking to you about a new one anyway. Why is that? Well, first of all, our existing emergency assistance and rate relief programs are ratepayer-funded. With the potential for accepting donations, there's an opportunity to do more for our customers without impacting rates. Second is that in looking at our existing programs, we have seen a gap in coverage. Not all low-income customers meet the program terms for our existing programs. So the idea is for a new program for temporary relief for more households. So what are we talking about in terms of the gap? We do a thorough job of evaluating qualification for our programs. We have to in order to be good stewards of the ratepayer dollars. But that does mean that sometimes we have to deny customers who may have needs this year even though their income last year was higher. That could be, for example, a newly retired low-income senior who wouldn't qualify for ongoing assistance program yet, if their income last year was above the threshold. That also wouldn't count as a temporary financial shock for our emergency assistance program. Customers with ongoing high medical bills also don't meet our temporary financial shock requirements, but can still have trouble paying their utility bills. And working families with ongoing limited financial resources can fall behind on bills and need a hand getting back on track. So we know there's a need, and we want to figure out how best to administer a donation program. We looked around the state at other utilities to understand how they've approached this. Examples include Puget Sound Energy, Seattle, Spokane. Most of our other local peers haven't put these kinds of programs in place yet. The key components that we saw are unique branding, and this helps on both ends, for communicating the nature of the program to people so they understand why they're being asked to donate, and also for helping people know that the help is available and that they should apply for it. Make it easy to donate. Accepting donations on the bill in addition to one-off donations is key to making this successful. And as I said, we'll have that functionality with our new billing system. And then dedicate donations for temporary relief. Donations may not be big enough or consistent enough to count on as the funding source for ongoing assistance. Donation funds are used for temporary relief and on an availability basis. So after considering these best practices that we saw, here's how we propose to implement the donation program. We'll make it easy for customers to donate with recurring fixed amounts on the bill. Think along the lines of checking a box for $5, $10, or $25 per month donation. For both residents and businesses, we'll make it easy to make donations one-time online, whether they're a customer or not. And to address the fact that we don't know how quickly folks will start donating, we're proposing to seed this with an initial $50,000 from utilities, and then to motivate donations to match that up to a $50,000 amount additionally annually. We want to make sure that we're able to hit the ground running instead of waiting for donations to come in before rolling out the new assistance. Next, I want to review how we're going to fill that gap in coverage that I mentioned. This new program is targeted at preventing water shut-offs. It'll be available to low-income customers who don't qualify for our ongoing discount program, but who have an urgent or shut-off notice. They don't need to have a temporary financial shock, and they don't need to be seniors or disabled, just low-income. It'll waive up to two months of basic utility service. Right now, that's equal to $333 at current rates. This doesn't replace our emergency assistance program, and in fact, it's in addition to it. If a customer is low-income and has both a shut-off and a temporary financial shock, they can qualify for the assistance already available in our rate-funded program plus the new donation-funded assistance. That'd be up to $1,000 of assistance if they have that need. We know that the key to making this program successful is effective outreach. We're proposing a two-pronged approach where we both promote the new donation program and ways to donate using all of our communications platforms, plus pushes directly in the customer bill insert and outreach to the business community. And at the same time, we'll layer on top of that direct outreach to inform customers that the new, about the new assistance program. This will include contacting customers when they go past due, updating our shut-off tags to make sure they know about the assistance option, as well as informing the internal and external service organizations and agencies that we partner with to help people. We have taken this through the Environmental Services Commission, and they reviewed the proposed donation program for rate assistance and unanimously recommended that city council adopt the program. If you give us direction to proceed, our next steps in this process are to prepare all of the outreach and communications materials, including make sure that outreach materials are translated, complete the necessary administrative updates to the city's donation policy, bring back an ordinance to council to enact the new assistance program and code, and then simultaneously with all of that, complete the technical implementation of the new billing And with that, I'll recap that we are seeking direction to return with an ordinance establishing the Neighbor Helping Neighbors Donation Funded Utility Rate Assistance Program. I'd be happy to address any questions that you may have.
Well, first of all, thanks for the great presentation, Andy and Lucy. Andy, that was very well thought out. Appreciate the work by the Environmental Services Commission as well directing this to us. And just a quick question, I'm going to turn it over to councilmember Lee, the liaison to the Environmental Services Commission. Just one quick question I saw on there. So two months, have we officially moved to monthly billing at this point, or are we still doing the bimonthly? And if it's bimonthly, then is it four months, or then is it just two months if it's coming in monthly?
That's a great question. So we have not yet implemented or rolled out the monthly billing.
Okay.
We're still in the process of that. Completing the implementation with the new billing system is a prerequisite for that.
Okay.
We're using the phrasing of two months so that we're clear about how much the assistance would be, whether the bills are being sent on a bimonthly or a monthly basis.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you for that. Councilmember Lee?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm on the road. I was going to propose, you know, to direct the staff, but before I do that, I want to state that this is an issue that the council asks the staff to look at. And so it's something that they have done very well diligently. They come back with a recommendation. And since you asked, you know, one of the key to make this work is timings right, because we're going to the monthly billing, online billing, so we don't have to go through all the hassle. So it's the right thing to do, so it's easy to accept donation, and then it's flexible, and so it's a good timing. And three is that donation, it's helping others without creating a rate impact for our customers. You know, this is from people who are volunteering to do it. We leave it from mandatory, people may not feel like, well, it's a donation. We're setting the rate, you have no choice. In this case, they have, and we're just providing a support baseline, I think, encouragement. I think it's seed money, so that's a great thing to do. Finally, the utility commission has reviewed it and fully support this particular program. So thanks to the staff, and thanks for the commission for recommending this for the council for approval. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Stokes. Sorry, councilmember Lee. Councilmember Stokes?
Yeah, thank you, deputy mayor. I agree with my colleague, and I really appreciate his helping the utilities go through this and put it in place. And all I want to say is that this is really great. Utilities are a universal need for all residents of the city. Poverty cannot be a basis to deny utility services or to not have people have services. It's crucial, and I'm really proud of your work on this and proud of the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rizan?
Yeah, thank you. I love this Neighbor Helping Neighbors. I mean, I think that, you know, more than anything COVID's taught us that there's lots of people in need in our community and to the degree we can reach out a helping hand because sometimes it's a choice between paying the utility bill or food. So being able to have this, I guess I did have a question about what you thought the timing is to go to monthly, because I think that was the other area that we might be able to help people, to be able to have more regular payments. And then, do we have a sense for the amount of the need? So when we think about how many folks might be in this urgent shut-off notice, how does that match up? And then lastly, just really excited that it's both resident and business, because I think that it is kind of potentially all hands on deck to help our neighbors. But there was a question embedded in there. Thanks.
Sure. Why don't I start with the monthly billing? So we will, we're targeting implementation of the new billing system towards the end of this year, so we expect to transition to monthly billing sometime in 2024. Your second question on how large is the need? We don't have perfect information, but we anticipate based on the data that we do have that we expect the need to be at least 100,000. It's on the high end, it's closer to 1 million. But one of the things that we will find out once we put it in place is we will learn what the level of need is, as well as what the level of donation is. And we plan to look at this as a part of each budget cycle and recommend any adjustments as needed.
Yeah, no, that's great. I think that when we are sending information into the community about the need, to the degree we can help people understand the nature of the need, maybe folks would donate a little bit more. Thank you.
Absolutely. And you had a third question in there about that's available to residents and businesses, the donations. Certainly, there's an opportunity for all of the community to donate. I just want to clarify, the assistance will be going to households, so to residents, and that's by, required by state law, only allows us to help households.
Oh, okay, yeah, I'm sorry. That wasn't actually a question. I was just glad to see that it is both residents and businesses that can donate, because that was actually a question I had, and then it was on the slide. So thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Robinson?
Thank you. I'm so excited about this program. You know, for years, we've known that the inability to pay the utility bill is one of the first signs that somebody may be about to lose their housing. And so this assistance to fill the gaps for the people who it didn't serve before, it's really important that we do this. So I feel great about it. I'm wondering if we can connect this program with our homelessness prevention program so that we could reach out to these individuals and make sure that they have the services that they need so that they do stay stably housed. Is that possible?
We will, we were certainly looking, looking to linking that. Absolutely.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, mayor. Councilmember Barxel, any comments?
All right, thank you, deputy mayor. Love the program as well, and the ability for neighbors to help neighbors. Just a couple of questions in terms of donations. Is there a limit to how much an individual can donate? If so, you know, what would that look like? Is that, and then, or business? And then, how is this matched? How are people matched? I think maybe this was part of councilmember's honest question. How are people, how are people matched with the donations? Is it, if I want to give to a particular household, then I can donate? I'm donating to a fund, the city determines who it goes to? I, how does that, how does that work?
Yeah, thank you. Both great questions. So for the first one, as far as we understand it, no, there's no reason to cap the amount people donate. However, there are some provisions in the city's donation policy, not a portion of code, but administrative updates that we'll need to put in place to make sure that it wasn't established envisioning recurring donations, and we're going to work all of that out in the time before implementation. On the second piece, donations would go into a specific fund, be earmarked for rate relief only, but we don't have a provision for donating directly to another person by name.
Okay, so that begs the question, how are we determining where that money goes then? Yeah.
So the city's donation policy lays out how donated funds of any sort with specific restrictions come in. And then, the use of those funds, people would apply through, to this new program that this would establish. And we would apply those funds to their accounts to credit the amount that they have up to that 333 or two bills' worth of, two months' worth of basic utility service amount that we described.
Awesome. Thank you. One last thing, I think it would be really good to have some sort of like a, maybe acknowledgement program or something to, instead of ice people to donate, is that in the current, part of the current thinking?
That's a great suggestion.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Robertson?
No, this is wonderful. You know, one thing I've learned over all my time of living Bellevue and being on the council is how generous the people and businesses of Bellevue are to each other, to people in need. And this gives people a chance to put something to really good use. The $50,000, I have a couple of questions. The $50,000, I wasn't really sure in your answer to councilmember Rizan about, you said the need is 100,000 to 1 million. How long, how far do we think the $50,000 is going to go? That's a match? We already have $50,000 donation, is that right? And this will make it 100,000 in the fund?
No. What we are planning to do is instead of waiting for donations, utilities would seed the program initially with $50,000. And then to encourage donations, we would match annually up to another 50,000.
Okay, so we would put another 50,000 in our budget every year? Great. And then, so, and how long do you think that will last if we don't get a lot of donations? Half a year?
So what we've done in establishing that level is we looked at the number of folks that actually resulted in actually getting their water shut off. And this level together, that 100,000 would cover that level. So it will cover roughly about 400 households.
Okay. Great, that's helpful. And I'm happy that we're moving to the monthly billing. I think it would be really nice if our new billing system would handle it, to be able to put on people's bill, not like the state of Washington does on our license tab where it automatically puts the $15 on and you have to zero it out. State Bar Association does that too. But just a blank of, if you would want to donate, you know, to neighbors in need. So if someone has a good month and they're paying their bill, they could throw, you know, $10, $100, however much they feel comfortable. Some people might want to donate if they don't have a lot of money, but they want to help. $5 for every bill they pay. I think having something on the bill that's optional would be really nice for the individual, or even the businesses, because they get utility bills too, as well as advertising this so that some of the businesses that do make investments in our human services in Bellevue can decide they want it to go here. So, great, that's my comment. Would you be able to do something like that on the bills?
Absolutely. That is what we're planning.
Oh, that was the plan. Okay, I didn't hear that aspect, and if it was in the packet, I missed it, I apologize. So yeah, great job. Really excited about this, and thanks. And thanks to the ESC for vetting it and sending it forward to us.
Absolutely. Thanks so much for the great presentation again tonight and for moving so quickly on this. I just have one request that maybe we can bring this back. Once the program is fully up and running, if after about a six-month period or at a time where you feel you have enough data, if you can come back to the council and give us an update in terms of, you know, is the need greater than the money that we actually have to fund this? Are we, are we seeing a greater need or not as strong of a need? Are we able to connect, as Mayor Robinson mentioned, are we able to connect them to other services if needed? And are we effective in doing that? I love councilmember Barxel's idea of recognizing the people that are, maybe we can do that on an annual basis, and you know, it's your city or something like that. I mean, maybe they won't have enough room to, hopefully that'll be, you know, a problem we would like to have, that we couldn't fit all the names in there. But it'd be great to acknowledge those that are giving back in this way, even if it's just once a year, would be, would be great to do that. And yeah, I have the exact same idea, because I see it on my PSE, right? You always say, or online, but I always have an availability there to add donations. So I think, I think we'll be pleasantly surprised that more people than not will be giving some money this year and the years to come. So thank you so much. Now with that, councilmember Lee, would you like to make as the liaison the motion on this one as well?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. I just want to open by saying it's a Neighbor Helping Neighbors program. How wonderful can it be? So I'd like to move to direct the staff to bring back ordinance to implement neighbor-to-neighbor program. Thank you.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and that passes. And now we will go into a quick break here, about 10 minutes, so about 20 to 21 minutes. And now we will go into a quick break here, about 10 minutes, so about 28. We'll, we'll come back. Thank you.
Under other ordinances, resolutions, and motions, we are going to discuss ordinance 6742. City manager, would you like to set this up for us, please?
6472 is a land use code amendment that establishes requirements and standards for micro apartments. And just while we have background, this land use code amendment ordinance removes barriers to micro apartments. These barriers were last discussed at your April 24th council meeting, and the barriers were recommended to be removed by both the staff as well as recommended by the planning commission. After tonight's presentation, staff are seeking council's consideration of adopting the proposed ordinance. With that, joining us at this meeting at the table is Rebecca Horner, the director, as well as Nick Whipple, planning manager, Matthew Menard, senior planner, all from the development services department. With that, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to the team.
Thank you, City Manager Miyaki. Good evening, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Nguyen-House, members of the council, Rebecca Horner with Development Services. As mentioned, with us tonight, and I'll turn it over to, after I do the introductions, Nick Whipple, who is our manager of code and policy, and Matthew Menard, who is our lead on this project and senior planner in code and policy.
Great, thank you, Rebecca, and good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and City Council. So for tonight, we are seeking direction for council consideration to adopt the LUCA ordinance, and direct staff to analyze provisions to very small dwelling units in the MFTE code. That's BCC Chapter 4.52, for potential updates at a future date. For our agenda this evening, we'd like to provide a bit of background and context as to how we came to tonight's meeting. We'll also cover briefly the components of the micro apartments land use code amendment. We'll recap the April 24th study session. There were a few questions there, and we've provided some responses in your packet, as well as tonight's presentation. And then we'll touch on the engagement as well. So in terms of background, this is one of the five actions that was selected by the city council as part of the next right work. The action, as the city manager noted, was to remove barriers to micro apartments. This also relates to the city's affordable housing strategy, specifically under Strategy B, which calls for the creation of a variety of housing choices in the city. This housing type is going to include a lower-priced option near jobs, transit, and shopping, as well as services, and it's directly responsive to Action B1 of the Affordable Housing Strategy, which is to encourage micro apartments. The objectives for this land use code amendment is to implement Action B1 of the Affordable Housing Strategy, also implement the Next Right Work action to remove barriers to the construction of micro apartments. We are looking to encourage micro apartments in certain locations in the city. As we've mentioned to you previously, there are few, if any, micro apartments that exist in the city. We do not have a prohibition on micro apartments in the city of Bellevue. However, we do have some code provisions that were identified as making it infeasible for this type of housing to really proliferate in the city. So this LUCA addresses many of those requirements. This is also responsive to the city's housing needs assessment, as identified in the 2022 Housing Needs Assessment, and particularly the housing gap that we have for single-person households in the city. So the Housing Needs Assessment identified 26% of Bellevue residents are single-person households, and we have about 22% of the units that are one or no bedroom that could actually account for the need. In terms of the LUCA process, so we have followed our land use code process four path for city council legislative actions. Council launched this item in October of 2022. We brought this to the community in the months between October and January, brought it to the planning commission beginning in January. The planning commission held their public hearing in March, and then transmitted their recommendation to you all on April 24th at your first study session on this topic. And tonight, we are back seeking action. So as a reminder, where we are looking to encourage and remove the barriers to the construction of micro apartments in the city, this LUCA would really apply to all of our mixed-use areas that are also within our transit network. So we have defined the transit network as within a half-mile of transit with service of four times per hour, a quarter-mile of transit with service of two times per hour. And we've also had kind of made this forward compatible with future light rail stations and bus rapid transit stations that are scheduled for opening. So it would be within a half-mile of a future station. Really quickly, the components of this LUCA, it does set a maximum unit size for micro apartments. That's been set at 320 square feet. It also establishes a minimum bicycle parking requirement, which would be one bike parking space for every five units. It would establish a lower minimum parking requirement at .25 stalls per unit. And then in our areas where we have a dwelling unit per acre measurement, it would establish that micro apartments count as a quarter of a dwelling unit. And then it also, the code would remove the requirement for multifamily play areas. As mentioned before, this is really targeting single-person households, so that was an amenity that was deemed incompatible with this housing type. So with that, Matthew is going to walk us through a recap of the April 24th study session.
Thanks, Nick. As Nick just mentioned, I will recap in some detail some of the questions that arose at the study session. We're going to focus on three questions this evening: aligning unit size with the MFTE program, the AMI requirements for parking reduction, and open space as we have eliminated the multifamily play area requirement. So question number one was whether we could align the 320-square-foot micro apartment unit size with a 300-square-foot very small dwelling unit size in the MFTE program. Now, we did want to cover the specifics of the MFTE program, so we're all on the same page. So the MFTE program does currently require that if units are under 300 square feet, they're classified as a very small dwelling unit, and they must be offered at 45% AMI or less to qualify for MFTE. Units larger than that would have to be at 80% AMI or less, unless they cannot meet our requirement for two-bedroom units, which if we had a building that was entirely micro apartments, we would think they would not qualify. So 15% of all buildings must be, am I too far away? Sorry. 15% of buildings must be two-bedroom units or larger. If you can't meet that requirement, you do need to either offer more units in the MFTE program, so 25% of units must be affordable instead of 20% of units, or offer a deeper affordability. So they would have to be at 70% AMI instead of 80% AMI. In this case, that would apply to units that were 301 square feet to 320 square feet if the micro apartments definition were to not change. We do want to make some differentiation between the two policy tools. So we have the land use code, which generally regulates land use in the city, so that's going to be development standards. It will apply to all development. In this case, it will apply to all micro apartments, specifically those micro apartments within the geographic scope that Nick mentioned earlier. Those micro apartments outside of that geographic scope, this section wouldn't apply to. So it'll set things like maximum size, density, height, setbacks, items like that. The MFTE program is a voluntary affordable housing incentive, specifically for new multifamily development. It is a 12-year residential property tax exemption, and that's in exchange for those affordable units. We do want to note that these two programs are in different sections of the city code, and the MFTE program does not live in the land use code, so these are two very distinct programs. In response to council's questions and recommendation on the study session, we have brought you three options this evening to consider, to make sure that we are responsive to your desires, and also have our staff recommendation as well. So option one is in direct response to council direction at the study session. It would entail delaying the land use code adoption until we can do an analysis of the MFTE program to try to find the appropriate AMI level for those very small dwelling units. It would also adjust the very small dwelling units size to match up with micro apartments. From our outreach in the region, we don't believe that 45% AMI is a feasible number for these units. We've done outreach in Seattle. Their number for very small dwelling units is 40% AMI, and based on all of our conversations with micro apartment developers, it was not being utilized. So we do think there needs to be more analysis into the MFTE program to set that AMI level appropriately for the very small dwelling units. We have spoken with our community development department, and they have stated that they could get that done by end of year. So by taking option one, that would delay the adoption of this LUCA until around the end of the year to allow us to do that analysis and have these both adopted at the same time. It would make sure that there's no inconsistency between the land use code and the MFTE program by doing that option.
By option one, you referring to option A, right?
Option A, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. The staff recommended option is option B, which would be to adopt the LUCA as drafted this evening. This would allow us to remove those barriers to micro apartments immediately. We do know that there is a developer that's interested in using these code amendments in Belred, so we are hoping to get these moving forward to see more diversity of housing type within the city. It would create an inconsistency between the two codes for a period of time. With our recommended direction, we are asking that council does direct us to begin updates of the MFTE code, to do that analysis, to make sure we get that AMI level right. But that does mean there will be an inconsistency between the two codes for approximately six months. It also does give certainty to developers who have been watching this process throughout and are expecting this code to go through. It also does mean that some developers could vest before the new building codes, which we have heard may add some challenges. As noted in one of the presentations earlier, some of the accessible clearances are a little bit larger, which may make these units a bit more difficult to build to the small size. Option C, which we are not recommending, is to modify the LUCA and adopt it this evening to decrease the micro apartment definition unit size to 300 square feet. We do think this would make micro apartments less appealing, and with the new building codes, it may not be feasible. We have had some input that 300 square feet is pushing the limits with the potential new codes. We don't believe that the Type A, the more accessible units, are going to be able to be built under 300 square feet with those larger clearances as well. So we are not recommending that option. The next question was, you know, as we stated at the study session, these units generally rent somewhere between 80 and 100% AMI, but at market rate, they could go under 80%. So with the parking reduction for affordable housing, would that mean that no micro apartments would have to provide parking? The short answer to this, that is no. They would have to meet our definition of affordable housing in the land use code, which does have more requirements than just renting at less than 80% AMI. So those units would have to rent at less than 80% AMI and be occupied by those households at less than 80% AMI for the perpetuity of the building. So we do require a covenant and restriction, and there's an administrative process with that to make sure those units are being occupied by those people under 80% AMI. We do think it is a fair trade-off for .25 of a parking space to ensure that these units are occupied for the life of the building by those people making less than 80% AMI that we deem to need affordable housing. So we are recommending that this remain, but I know that question did come up at the last meeting. And the final question is, with the reduction of the multifamily play area requirement, do these units have access to open space? As you can see on the map, we provided the lighter green areas are those areas that our parks departments determines have good walkable access to both parks and trails access points. So those are going to be a third of a mile walk distance to a park or trail access point. The areas outlined in red are the areas that the micro apartment LUCA would impact. So you see, we do have pretty good coverage over those areas. There are a few areas that you can see we need to work on a little bit, Belred, but they are in our parks plan, and we are moving forward to providing more open space in those areas. We do also have other open space provisions that will continue to apply through the land use code if they are required in that district. Those things are going to be something like public plazas, setbacks, landscaping requirements, item like that. These micro apartments will not be exempt from those provisions. They are solely exempt from the multifamily play area provisions. As Nick mentioned, we have done public engagement with this process. So we went through our process for requirements that did include noticing and public hearing with the planning commission. Planning commission did unanimously recommend that we adopt the LUCA as presented. We did speak with several developers, architects, and property managers that had built specifically this unit type throughout the region to really target, to make sure we are getting the barriers correct and how to remove those barriers. We held a community information session via Zoom on January 19th, and we've maintained an online presence with this, with both a webpage and a neighborhood newsletter outreach in January as well. Again, as a reminder, our direction for consideration this evening is to adopt the LUCA and direct staff to analyze provisions relating to very small dwelling units in BCC Chapter 4.52 for potential updates at a future date. And with that, Deputy Mayor, I will hand it back to you.
Okay. Well, thanks so much, and great presentation. Thank you all, Rebecca, Nick, and Matthew. Before I turn it over to my colleagues, Matthew, I just want to make sure I heard you correctly. Did you say the planning commission did not recommend?
The planning commission did recommend.
They did recommend. Okay, thank you so much. Appreciate that. Okay, I'm going to start with Mayor Robinson, and then I'm going to go to Councilmember Robertson, and then we'll make our way down. So Mayor Robinson, would you like to kick us off?
Yeah, thank you for that. You know, this is, I'm so excited to see this before the council. This is something that we started talking about when I got on the council in 2014, and we voted in as part of our affordable housing strategy in 2017. So it's been a long time in coming, and I know this micro housing isn't for everybody, but it is a missing link of our housing spectrum in Bellevue, and will give people an opportunity to have a low-cost unit that's never been available before in Bellevue. And so I'm really excited to move this forward, especially when I look at the redevelopment going on in Belred and Wilberton. I'm comfortable with the staff's option B. I would like to have the opportunity to examine MFTE and parking requirements, and I know they can do that in the next six months. I'm not sure at this point if I would want to modify the MFTE program or the land use code amendment. So I'd like staff to really have a look at that and see what they recommend, if any of that. But as option B is stated, I support that, and I'd like to see the review of the parking and the MFTE come back within six months, if that's possible. And I also want to, again, appreciate the planning commission's work on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Robertson?
So the planning commission did recommend this. They did have a lot of angst about affordability. And when they presented to council the last time this was on our agenda, the planning commissioner presenting admitted that they did not realize that there was a mismatch with the MFTE code, and they didn't realize that this would result in there being no parking on these sites. Just doesn't matter, of course, if they're run at a market rate. So they did recommend it, but I think that they, like this council, are very much committed to and interested in increasing affordable housing developments in the city. So the LUCA as drafted was a bit of a miss. It is a mismatch with the MFTE, which staff said. And yet, the recommendation is, pass it anyway, we'll fix the MFTE later. I'm not really in favor of making hasty decisions knowing something is a mismatch. I don't think that's wise. And this council has been fairly wise in the way we legislate. So I worked with the city attorney's office and put together an amendment, which was emailed to council, let me just get mine up, which would make the, yet I guess before, let me go back. I understand from council that there's definitely an interest in adopting the code now, rather than waiting. So I worked with the city attorney's office to make the code, come up with amendments that would make it consistent with the MFTE today, and if the MFT is changed, and maybe it needs to be changed to 60%, 50% AMI, very small units increased to 350, what, you know, or 320, whatever the changes that need to be made and studied, the amendments that I'm putting forward would be effective, they're matched today, and if the MFT is changed, they'd be matched later, because what I recommended is incorporating these standards for the MFTE AMI, which is the 45%, but it's based on a code reference into the parking requirement and into the unit size. So I'll just walk through those very quickly. So on the definitions, it would reduce the unit size to 300, because that is consistent with the MFTE today. But it would also say, or the size of a very small dwelling unit as set forth in the basically MFTE code, whichever is larger. So if this council in six months' time, if the MFTE comes back in six months, which we know how that sometimes goes, and we set that at 350, it would be 350 in land use code. The parking, same thing. It's consistent with the way the parking is treated today, but it wouldn't allow someone to have zero parking when they're charging a market rate. From my perspective, if we don't make these changes, what we are doing is doing a giveaway, where the multifamily tax exemption, someone gets a property tax exemption for 12 years by building affordable housing. They would get the property tax exemption and have their reduced property tax, but they'd be charging market rates for the unit, because the market rates, as we were told last time, is generally 60 to 80% AMI anyway, because of the small size. Same thing with the parking. It says there's a quarter parking space per unit, even though the demand is a third of a parking space per unit, as we heard last time. But this would allow them to, if they go through the paperwork, to have no parking. So I'm not really in favor of that. I think that is bad policy. So I would recommend that we adopt, but I understand the need to move tonight. I would recommend that we adopt this tonight with the changes that were emailed to you on my behalf from the city attorney's office today, because we want to do the right thing, and we want to do it now, but it has to match. It has to be a match with the affordable housing. Otherwise, we're just passing sloppy legislation, and I don't think that that's good policy. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Robertson. Councilmember Barxel?
I guess I would just ask if staff has any reaction, so I could consider.
So in response to Councilmember Robertson's amendment?
Yes.
I mean, we completely agree that it would be good to have some alignment there. We have some concern, just as Matthew noted, with option C, which would reduce the size to 300 square feet, but we recognize that connecting it to the multifamily tax exemption program would allow that to raise, if we decide, if this council decides at a future date to raise the size of a very small dwelling unit. So it does connect in that way, which has some use there. But we have a developer, as we mentioned, that's also very interested in pursuing a micro apartment project. They've had their pre-application conference. They've also moved into a pre-development services application, and they're ready to kind of respond to this new update here, which is, I think, about 189 units in Belred. This would not allow them to take advantage of the code if the unit size were to drop to 300 square feet. So they'd have to wait until any future change with the multifamily tax exemption program. I also just wanted to clarify, and it was provided in the responses to previous questions, or maybe just reinforce, the reduced parking requirement, it would take the minimum parking from .25 to zero as drafted when a project meets the definition for affordable housing. So while it's correct that many of the units will naturally fall at about 80% AMI, meeting the definition of the affordable housing in the land use code also means that those units would have to be restricted to qualifying households, which is not a requirement of a developer that just wants to rent it at the market rate, which might naturally fall at 80% AMI. So this does reserve units as affordable in perpetuity, which is different also than the multifamily tax exemption program, which would set those aside for a 12-year period. And then the other, just clarification around the, there was one other piece, I'm sorry, just escaped me. But the parking, and then I think just the definition piece was just the 300 versus the 320 square feet, which differs from the staff recommendation tonight. But again, it does connect to the MFTE code in the future.
Just one additional point, if I may. I do want to stress that the 300-square-foot requirement and then 301 square feet is currently at 80% AMI, so that is not a function of this LUCA. That's how the MFTE program currently exists. So we're not, we haven't proposed to change that at all. So currently, under the land use code and under the MFTE program, you could build a 310-square-foot apartment and qualify for MFT. So I just do want to make that clear.
Got it. Thank you. I may have another point after we go around, but I would just say, at the moment, I think I'm okay with proceeding. And I appreciate the clarification, because I guess it was the giveaway point that I was, you know, and sort of the impact of giving away affordability, if you will. But we're talking about a six-month window, and I think one of the other benefits, too, of this is you'll have some runway with, that you'll be able to consider when it comes time to align the two programs. Is that... Okay, thanks.
Thank you. I'm going to go last, so Councilmember Lee, would you like to go next?
Yes, we all would like to, you know, see the project moving forward, you know. I mean, we need to have housing, what time, whatever you're trying. But I do agree with Councilmember Robertson that when we do something, we want to do it right. You know, we don't want to do it kind of, you know, sloppily, in a way. Maybe that's not a, you know, real accurate description, but you know what I mean. You mentioned, when the reason why we want to get it done now is because some developers waiting to have a project. To me, I don't think that's a real good reason, because we want to make sure that it's done right. Ultimately, we want to have all the projects, all the units done right. And if we don't look at the reason why, you know, they have the need to do it for many reasons, I'm not going to second-guess for whatever it might be, I don't think that's a very appealing reason. So that's, so I think I would support Councilmember Robertson's amendment. The only thing, I would like to ask a question in this discussion. It relates to parking, you know, in a way. You're not, I think, I believe we need to keep at this 320. So one question I have seen, parking, in a way, you know, no matter what kind of affordable housing we provide, whatever AMI, we can never say that people are not going to have a need for parking space. You know, I mean, I think if we say we don't need a parking space, it's easy for developers to build a unit without parking space, because it's cheaper, so they can develop lots of units. But the question is, when people want to, you know, rent a place, living there, or buy it, parking is a consideration. We're taking away things that may not be, that they don't want to do with, do away with. So I'm just questioning, how, what that was proposing, you know, aligning with FTE, you know, MFTE, how is that going to address the parking situation? Will it also give us a better alignment with MFTE program, that we have a better understanding of the parking requirement?
So with option A, what we were proposing to do, as we updated the MFTE program, we'd also update the LUCA to set the parking AMI requirement for zero parking at the same as the very small dwelling unit. So that's going to take some analysis to do. It's something that Councilmember Robertson has addressed through her proposed amendments as well. You know, we do acknowledge that there are certainly people that will have cars. With the LUCA, the requirement would be set at zero if you provide affordable housing. It doesn't prevent developers or affordable housing providers from providing more parking than that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Stokes?
Yeah, I am very much ready to go with the recommendation, the planning commission and the staff on this. I mean, I I mean, I understand having arguments about whether it's a good thing to do or not for various reasons, but I think, I just have trouble with thinking a modest inconsistency, which we can deal with, is not a barrier or an excuse for delay. And we have a tendency on a lot of different things where there's some disagreement to find a way to keep delaying things. Sometimes it takes us years. And I think it's been well set out by the, by the staff and well set out by the Planning Commission. And hate, and to use basically the idea that this is a hasty decisions, it's, and the City Attorney somehow is giving some credence to this. And the, it's a giveaway. It's sloppy. And when we want to do something, do it right. That's, that's kind of offensive in terms of really looking at this in a more, I wouldn't say intellectual, but in a very realistic look at this. And it's a six-month thing. It's a very good idea. Sometimes you have to be creative to get things done. And we, we have so many, we do a lot of things in timing very well, but we have so many things we go back and look at and say, gee, I wish we hadn't messed around for a long time. If something comes up six years, six months from now, some other factor that takes it different, we end up a year from now, when we could do something that is actually well set out and is realistic and accomplish some goals that we've been talking about since, as the mayor said, and she and I worked together on this, that's when we first started on council. That's a long time ago. And we're still talking about something we could have done 10 years ago if we wanted to and got to that point. So, I think it's, it's a, you always have to balance things. And I think the balance on this, for me, is that we need to get moving on this. We have somebody, and it's not just because of one developer, but that's a bonus. And I think if we do this, we will encourage more developers to get involved in this. So, I think it's a, it's a win for us. Nothing is ever perfect, but I think this is as good as it's going to get right now. And when we get, and we have to be, you know, really looking at this and making sure we don't let it slip down the line in putting those back, you know, to have the consistencies together. But overall, I think it's a very good action for us to take and something that really says we believe what we, and we follow what we say. We want to have, really do what we can to get affordable housing in all the ways we can. And this is a big step forward, and I'm for it.
Thank you. And Councilmembers on?
Yes, thank you for thoughtfully considering the three points that we had and coming back with information. I know that we didn't, I mean, and I appreciate hearing from my colleagues. Since I was the one that brought up the piece about the open space, I appreciate the fact that there's the map that shows, you know, where these zones are and the access to parks or open space. And although I did see that in Victoria, there's a bit of a void there, or the mall is, that we will take a look to make sure that as we think about parks and open space, that we make sure that any of these spaces where we're looking at micro apartments, that we have that. And I was thinking about what the mayor said, which is that in these micro apartments, that they aren't going to be for everyone. Not everyone wants to live in a unit that's 320 square feet. But, you know, growing up in Hong Kong where the units are very small, 320 doesn't sound really small. And I do believe it's a missing link. What, what I was thinking about is what you said earlier about how many single-family households there are in Bellevue and then how few single-family or single-person units there are. And then, I believe you also said that when we look at other cities, that these smaller units are really not being built because there are barriers, barriers to getting the return on revenue in order to build them. And we know we need them. So, that's another thing that I've been thinking about. And ultimately, the units have to be marketable. So, what I also hear you saying is that the code that we establish are the minimums. And yet, for the developers, they are going to be developing units that need to be marketable. So, if that means that the minimum of the .25 is something that they think should actually be higher for that apartment building, then we're not saying that you can't add in parking. We're just saying that this is the absolute minimum that is code required. Is that right? Because I was thinking about that too. And then, ultimately, I think in a similar way to some other things that we've worked on recently, there's kind of this phase one and phase two. So, what I see in your recommendation for option B is really kind of a phase one to get going with this micro apartments, knowing that with the new building codes, even 320 may be a bit of a, of a stretch in order to fit in all of the required code pieces associated with it. And then, this phase two would be taking a look at these other elements and coming back to us with any recommendations that you have. So, those are some things I was thinking about. I suppose there may be a couple of questions embedded in there, just to verify that. One, we do have an imbalance between the number of units and the single-family or single-person households, as well as the, what we're seeing in other cities.
There are 26% of residents are single-person households and 22% of units are one or no bedroom. So, there is a mismatch there. Based on reports we have from last year, there were no micro apartments built on the east side at all. The, all the micro apartments within the region were built within Seattle. So, we're not seeing this product on the east side. Seattle does have codes specific to what they call CDOs, or small efficiency dwelling units, which would be equivalent to what we're proposing.
Okay, because the goal with this is knowing that we have this, the code already, and it wasn't working. We weren't seeing any housing. So, the goal of this change is actually to find a way for micro apartments to be built. And in this phase one, we'll get a sense for whether this is actually going to result in that and make adjustments in this phase two. Right? Thank you.
Did you have a further response to Councilmember on, or was that it?
I would just maybe phase two, you could maybe view as a way to encourage utilization of the MFTE program in conjunction with the micro apartments land use code amendment. So, creating better alignment there and encouraging use of both kind of separate Bellevue codes.
And we'll have this test case in phase one to kind of see, you know, what are the conversations and from the development committee, what are some other things as a, as a result of this phase two that we might want to make some minor adjustments in. Right? Thank you.
All right, this is a tough one for me. I'm always deferential to action. I really appreciate the urgency that you have around us and getting this to the point where we're at today. Having said that, you know, I shared some of this, you know, earlier in the week or during our briefing. You know, it's only six months. There is that mismatch. I always prefer things are a little bit cleaner if possible. I know Councilmember Stokes makes a good point. It's not always going to be perfect. And, you know, perfection shouldn't be the enemy of good. You know, I totally get that. But at the same time, if we have an amendment before us this evening, that can help clean this up a little bit. I hope my colleagues would, would, would consider it. And then, we could still have this come back to us in six months. If there needs to be any additional changes or tweaks or et cetera, based on the feedback that you receive, I think that would, that would suffice. Partially because as well as, I didn't know until this evening, Councilmember Roberts, I didn't know that the Planning Commission was unaware of the impact to the MFTE program and that that would need to be addressed. That was simply just unknown, unknown to me. And I'm not sure how many of my council, fellow colleagues and councilmembers here were aware of that. So, and if they had been, I wonder if that would have changed their analysis or recommendation a little bit. So, because of that, I would be more in favor of supporting the amendment that Councilmember Robertson will be introducing shortly. But if that fails, I'm still glad that we're moving forward on this. I want to make that clear, because it's obviously an urgent need and we want to create a more affordable housing, and in this case, micro apartments. However, I don't think six months is a, is a long time. And I believe it's only one developer currently that's looking at this program. And I think, I know you had it in one of your slides as a, as, you know, that we can provide that certainty. I think we've already provided that certainty this is going to happen. You know, I don't think there's any, there's any question about that. If it happens, we pass it tonight, tomorrow, or in six months from now. They know this is going to happen. They can start taking appropriate action. So, that's kind of where I stand. So, with that, I will, oh, hang on one second. I see the clerk. Go ahead.
The mayor.
Oh, sorry. I will go back to the, to the mayor in a second. But that's my comment on that. I think we're going to go probably one more time around. Mayor Robinson?
Thank you. You know, I really appreciated this discussion, and I always appreciate Councilmember Robertson's ideas with her experience and her knowledge. It's very, very valuable. Having said that, however, I would like to make a motion that we adopt option B as proposed by staff.
Okay, we have it seconded at this time. If there is any further discussion, if not, I'll allow Councilmember Robertson to make her amendment. Oh, one, yes, Councilmember Lee?
I'd like to ask a question. I think it's follow-up with Councilmember's answer, answer a question to you. You mentioned that there, a question was how many single people live in the city? You have a number, you know, there's not enough. I mean, there are a number of single people live here, but there's no micro apartments built. So, you have a number. How many single people live?
So, the 2022 Housing Needs Assessment has 26% of Bellevue residents are single-person households.
Yeah. Did you have any question or information regarding how many of them have cars or have no cars?
Councilmember Lee, the Housing Needs Assessment does not provide kind of the level of detail.
That might be any information to have, because we're talking about parking. Just a thought.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember, Councilmember Robertson?
Yes, thank you. I'm going to amend ordinance 6742 with the revisions that all the council members got in the email, which includes making this true up with the MFTE for very small dwelling units for both size and parking. And that, which then would flex back if the MFTE is amended later.
Do you have a second? Okay. All those in favor say aye?
Aye, I wanted to speak to it. Yeah.
Oh, you want to speak to it?
I want to speak to it, yeah. So, it's interesting that one of my colleagues said, oh, we can't do the amendments because we don't want to delay. I brought the amendments forward so we wouldn't have to delay. And I hear a lot of council members say we want affordable housing. If we want to walk the talk, then we should amend it so that it's consistent with the MFTE. And it will actually not just make smaller housing, but it will make affordable housing with that deeper affordability. So, if we want these, these are supposed to fill an inch. If we want to walk the talk, we should, we should do so. So, I would encourage a yes vote.
Okay, now I will call for the vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? All those opposing?
Aye.
Okay, so that amendment fails. We'll now vote on the main motion, which has... Okay, if you'd like to open it back up to a debate, but I think your amendment has already failed. I'm not sure what...
You know what?
I'll allow you some, some time to speak to...
I get to speak to it.
Okay, speak, and then I'll call for it.
So, I think it's really poor form to pass legislation that we know is wrong. Yes, perfect is the enemy of the good, but we have the chance to make it perfect. And I'm a, I'm a hard no on this. I think passing legislation that we know is wrong is stupid. And this is not a stupid council. So, I'm voting no. Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, I'm going to go to Councilmember Stokes first, because...
I'm not going to argue with it. It's just...
Oh, okay. Go ahead, Councilmember Lee.
Inconsistent. Makes sense. We talk about building housing units. Absolutely. That's good. We need to build more. But also, we want to be able to let people live there. And we need to have, people want to live in there. If they don't, you know, so, we need to figure out all the specifics regarding, we still haven't got the answers with, you know, MFTE. Talk about parking, talk about size and other stuff. I think we're pretty comfortable with size, but I still am not that comfortable with parking. You know, if people don't want to live there, if they can't, if they don't live there, no place to park, what do you do with the cars? What do you do with it? They're not going to live there. Developers are going to have problems too. So, that's my position.
Councilmember Stokes?
I think what we're doing is not unreasonable. And I think it's very possible that it will be the best route to take in this. And I do not appreciate having this instead of a good discussion of the pros and cons of it, a kind of demeaning and, and then reaction of as if we're doing something that is wrong and going off a different path. Those are, those are opinions, and they're not very well received. And it makes it, this kind, the conversation get away from looking at what we can do with what's in front of us and the recommendations of the staff, which I highly value. And I still think that the Planning Commission didn't do anything different and probably would not have had the, if these factors weren't really part of it. And I just wish we'd keep the, the debate on the substance and not perceptions of things. And, and, you know, consistency is the, what's that, something of the fault of small minds. And I think...
Okay, let's, let's not go into personal attacks.
By saying what I was trying to say. I don't really appreciate it. Always do that.
Thank you, Councilmember Robertson. Thank you, Councilmember Stokes. You've, you've had your say. You've both had your say. So, at this point, we're going to go to the vote. Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
No.
Okay, and it passes. That will be the end of our meeting tonight, and we'll see you back next Monday. Thank you so much.